I now call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order at 7:01 PM. We'll now take a moment of silence to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The coordinator call the roll?
Ms. Jackson?
Present.
Mr. Rollins?
Here.
Ms. Scirrano?
Here.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Present.
Mr. Segal?
Here.
Mr. Connor?
Here.
Ms. Escobedo?
Here.
With seven present, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Before we go any further, I'd like to thank Jayden Boykins and Rod Woodell from Jefferson High School. The students are here with helping us with the AV assistance for the Channel 20 broadcast. So let's give them a hand. I would like to read the following proclamation. Whereas the Illinois Principals Association has declared the month of October 2016 as National Principals Month in coordination with the efforts of the National Association of the Elementary School Principals, the American Federation of School Administrators, and the National Association of Secondary School Principals, working with the United States Congress and to designate National Principals Month and resolutions thereof. And whereas principals' vision, dedication, and determination provides the mobilizing force behind any school reform effort, whereas principals are expected to be educational visionaries, instructional leaders, assessment experts, disciplinarians, community builders, public relations experts, budget analysts, facility managers, special program administrators, and guardians of various legal contractual and policy mandates and initiatives, as well as being entrusted with the education and development of young people, the most valuable resource. And whereas principals set the academic tone for their schools and work collaboratively with teachers to develop and maintain high curriculum standards, develop mission statements, and set performance goals and objectives for students, for schools to achieve educational excellence. And whereas the Board of Education of the Rockford School District Number 205, Winnebago-Boone Counties in Illinois honors such exemplary school leaders committed to serving students. And whereas the Board of Education of Rockford School District 205 recognizes outstanding school principals who have succeeded in providing high-quality learning opportunities for students, as well as their exemplary contributions to the profession, now therefore be resolved in honor of the service of all pre-kindergarten, elementary, middle-level, and high-school principals and assistant principals, and to recognize the importance of their school leadership so that every child has access to a high-quality education. And to celebrate school leader accomplishments, the Board of Education of School District 205 recognizes the month of October as National Principals Month this day, October 11, 2016. May I have a motion to approve this proclamation?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor. Is there a second?
Second.
Have the coordinator call the roll on the approval of the proclamation.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Ms. Scirrano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Escobedo?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
I'll applaud a round of applause for all of our principals and assistant principals. Mr. Connor, I'm going to hand this down to you for your signature. Okay, we will now recognize and celebrate outstanding contributions of our students and staff. Mr. Earl Dotson Jr., you have the microphone.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, Board members. Rockford Public Schools is honored to recognize Linda Kimmel, a longtime employee and nurse at Whiteswan and Rolling Green Elementary Schools, as a 2016-2017 Illinois School Nurse of the Year. The distinction comes from the Illinois Association of School Nurses. The award is conferred for exemplary school nursing leadership, professionalism, achievement, and outstanding service to IASN and the community at large, as well as for direct and expert services to children. This recognition also means Nurse Kimmel is the Illinois Honoree for the National School Nurse of Excellence Award, given by the National Association of School Nurses. She will be honored at the IASN Annual Conference later this month in Springfield. Congratulations and thank you for all you do for Rockford Public Schools and its students. Please join me again congratulating Linda Kimmel.
Thank you. So proud of you guys. That's great. Absolutely great.
Zhang, Cassandra Shriver, Paul White, Shanita Janvenic, and Monet Zayed are among approximately
We are now at the petitions and communication portion of our meeting when we invite the
16,000 semifinalists across the country for scholarships in the 2017 National Merit
public to make comments. The First Amendment of the United States Constitution guarantees
Scholarship Program. All five students are in the Gifted Academy at Auburn. These five
the right of citizens to petition their government, as well as provides for freedom of speech. Also, the Illinois School Code requires that there be a time at regular and special meetings
students now have the opportunity to continue in the competition for the National Merit
for public comment. Thus, we are following those mandates during these petitions and
Scholarship. Congratulations to these students, their teachers, and their families who have
communications portions of our agenda. According to our board policy, the public comments
supported their academic careers this far. These students are here this evening. Please
portion of the meeting is limited to a total of 30 minutes. The board will not respond
join me in congratulating them on their accomplishment.
to comments at this time. If it's appropriate, you will be contacted in a timely manner by staff in response to your questions. In order to allow sufficient time for the business of the board and conduct our meeting in efficient and effective manner, we are requesting that you comply with the guidelines that are posted. And each speaker will be allowed no more than two minutes to address the board. It's not appropriate to address individual board members or individual administrators, or discuss matters that would otherwise be confidential in such open meetings. Two names will be called at one time, the one whose turn it is to speak and the one who is next. When you're the second person, please come to the front so we can have everybody ready. I also want to point out that we do have a clock on the wall to help you with your two minutes. We thank you for your interest and for your cooperation with our guidelines. We have three speakers tonight. The first speaker is Nancy Gudowski, to be followed by William Stokes. Nancy, you'll push the button there?
When an organization becomes a bloated leadership at its uppermost level, the middle management and union employees become disenfranchised and discouraged. Upper management received approximately a 49% pay raise, which is above the state limit of 6%, resulting in taxpayers paying a $1.5 to $1.8 million fine. Then the same leadership whines, there is no money for anti-poverty pay increases for paraprofessionals, bus drivers, and food service employees. When pairs are told at an orientation meeting, if your spouse does business with the school district, that is unethical because you are benefiting monetarily. However, a top administrator's spouse, company, gets millions of dollars in contracts from RPS, and that is not unethical? There are two sets of rules in RPS, one for the administrative elite and the other for the subordinate level of employees. Not to be unkind, but if most of the top administration took a long vacation, the students wouldn't know the difference, and schools would continue to operate. But if your lowest-paid, undervalued employees who work directly with the students, whether as a paraprofessional, a bus driver, and food service employees, all took off for a long vacation, it would shut down this entire school district. Do you see the irony here and the culture of disrespect? Thank you.
Nancy? William Stokes, to be followed by Allison Wang.
And pleasant good evening to everyone. William Stokes, I'm employed at Risa Middle School as a paraprofessional. I'd like to start by saying that vacations, newer cars or new cars, remodeled or new homes, promotions, raises, et cetera, all things enjoyed by administrative staff and contractors, not the 1,000 employees who are closest to the students. It's been said, the further you are away from the student, the higher your income. Local 692, local 1275, and local 3210 are like indentured servants. We do a lot of the hard work, but get no respect or wages and benefits. Bricks, glass, concrete, plastic have never taught a student. People make the difference. Babysitters make more per hour than we do. Our hours and pay do not reach poverty income, which is about $24,000 a year. The proposed insurance premium, two times per month, will take 3/4 of our wages away, while insurance costs have decreased over 10% since the last contract. This is the case of impoverished workers working with impoverished students in an impoverished community. That is the same, impoverished. RPS Board bargained realistically, like to take the shackles off Rockford, because it will not transform forward. And finally, do unto others as you would have them to do unto you. Fair pay for RPS families. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Allison Wang?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Last year, in July, I brought to everyone's attention of some administrators' salary increases over the past couple of years. For example, one administrator's salary increased 60% over the last four years. Now, I'm not saying this is a bad thing necessarily. If administrators were excellent at their jobs, then they certainly deserve this. This time, I want to bring to everyone's attention about the salaries of school bus drivers. In order to get an idea of what the norm kind of looks like compared to others in the nation, I searched the U.S. Census. This is what I found. In New York City, school bus driver salaries are about, say, 20% less than New York City's average household income. In Chicago, bus driver salaries are 22% less than Chicago's average household income. Now, in Rockford, our school bus driver salaries are almost 60% less than our average household income. This is 60, six zero, not 16, one six. Even our pay ratio is lower than that of Peoria, Elgin, and Aurora. The people doing their jobs to make this school district a better place were not acknowledged. Bus drivers ensure that every single student arrives to school on time and safely. They ensure that each student comes home safely. Why not give them their due credit and say thank you?
Thank you, Ms. Wang. Are there any board member comments at this time? Ms. McCulloch?
Okay, I'm pretty darn excited about East beating Boylan.
Yeah.
And I'm also excited, I mean, Auburn beat Harlem, and then how about Jefferson beating Hanega? I mean, what a weekend we had. And I'm just really proud of everyone for their work, because, you know, it's been a season, and they've been working all along. And I wish them luck as they go forward for the last two more weeks, I think, right?
Very good.
Yay!
Thank you. Any other board member comments? Okay. Well, now, we are now at the consent portion of our agenda, including the following consent items, the meeting minutes of September 27, 2016, payroll, accounts payable, purchase orders, contracts under 10,000, construction bid pay request log, and travel, the bid recommendation for the Auburn High School auditorium lighting system upgrade, the recurring contract for Cumberland contract for social worker, the other consent items for the RBMA, the resolution to approve the 2016 tax levies, the workers' compensation settlement agreement, and the Freedom of Information Log. Is there a motion and a second to approve these consent items?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Segal. Are there any consent items that board members wish to have pulled for separate consideration? Ms. Jackson?
Eight E.
Eight E, okay. Mr. Escobedo?
Eight A.
Eight A, okay. Okay. Anything else? None. Have the coordinator call the roll on the approval of the items not pulled?
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Ms. Scirrano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Escobedo?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
We will now, I'll ask for a motion and a second to approve item 8A, which is the meeting minutes of September 27.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Rollins. Questions or discussion? Seeing none, I'll have the coordinator call the roll on the approval of the meeting minutes of September 27.
Ms. Scirrano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Escobedo?
Abstain.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses, one abstain.
Thank you. I'll take a motion for the item 8E, which is the contracts under 10,000.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Rollins. Questions or discussion? Ms. Jackson?
I do. So Sylvester Enterprises is on here again. I'm assuming this is a new contract under $10,000 for strategic planning process for our Rockford Public Schools' special programs. Is there someone that can speak to this strategic planning process for our special programs, like what this all entails?
Dr. Jarrett, you want to take that one?
Yeah, I think I can, unless Matt, you want to.
Don't fight over it, please.
Yeah, this is basically the planning process that we're going through for another, all five of our programs have undertaken, and there's typically been a board member that's gone through the initial phases. This is Montessori's turn to do that, and it's my understanding that Sylvester was selected to be the person who ran through that process.
So the special programs, all of them, so that's bilingual, probably, I can't name them all. So each of them are developing their own strategic plan?
Right. It's not contradicting the plan of the district. Each of these programs have their own unique five-year plans that they're developing to enhance that work. So again, I believe, Mr. Scirrano, you were involved with Haskell.
I'm on the Haskel.
Different board members have served on different ones. I don't remember who's been assigned to each one. But four of them went in year one, and this group is the only one that's starting year one this year, because we're waiting for them to move into their new building.
Ms. McCulloch?
My only question is, is this is the first under 10 contract with this company for this year, correct? I mean, that's all we have to do is we have to fall within that under 10, or does it have to be per?
So I think the last amount, yeah.
Each year?
Each fiscal year, so this is new to this fiscal year.
So even if she or the company was to do another strategic plan with us that brought them over 10, now then you'd have to bring it back?
Correct. You can't break it into increments and not have it count. Once you've exceeded 10,000 in total services, then no one.
So this falls within that. Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? None. The coordinator then call the roll on the approval of the contracts under 10,000.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Escobedo?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Ms. Scirrano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We are now at the closed session consent agenda items, including the approval of Denise Niner as a 12-month Assistant Principal of Health Services, the group health insurance enrollment appeal, the HR organizational report and addendum, the closed session student discipline in which expelled or suspended students are prohibited from being on school grounds and school-sponsored activities without prior written permission of the principal. Student GDM 4005-16 and GDM 4006-17 are expelled for the remainder of the 2016-17 school year, and student GDM 4007-17 is expelled for the remainder of the first semester of this current school year. The following students were granted EIA's, 3021s, 3027, 3030, 3032, and 3034, and 3042 was pulled. Is there a motion and a second to approve these closed consent items?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Are there any items that board members wish to have pulled for separate consideration? Ms. Jackson?
13.
13, okay. Any others? None. Have the coordinator call the roll on the approval of the closed session consent items not pulled.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Escobedo?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Ms. Scirrano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We are now at the closed session consent agenda items, including the approval of Denise Niner as a 12-month Assistant Principal of Health Services, the group health insurance enrollment appeal, the HR organizational report and addendum, the closed session student discipline in which expelled or suspended students are prohibited from being on school grounds and school-sponsored activities without prior written permission of the principal. Student GDM 4005-16 and GDM 4006-17 are expelled for the remainder of the 2016-17 school year, and student GDM 4007-17 is expelled for the remainder of the first semester of this current school year. The following students were granted EIA's, 3021s, 3027, 3030, 3032, and 3034, and 3042 was pulled. Is there a motion and a second to approve these closed consent items?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Are there any items that board members wish to have pulled for separate consideration? Ms. Jackson?
13.
13, okay. Any others? None. Have the coordinator call the roll on the approval of the closed session consent items not pulled.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Escobedo?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Ms. Scirrano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
I'll now take a motion and a second to approve item 13, the student discipline.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Segal. There is no discussion. The coordinator call the roll on the approval of item 13, student discipline.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Escobedo?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Abstain.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Ms. Scirrano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses, one abstain.
Thank you. We'll move on to our next agenda item, which is the superintendent's report. Dr. Jarrett?
I want to go back and draw a little attention to something the board took action on in the consent agenda, which is 11B, the resolution to approve the 2016 tax levy. I think this bears some additional conversation. I've asked Martin McConaughey to give a brief overview so that the community understands the hard work that our Budget and Finance Subcommittee, led by Mr. Rollins and a number of community members, as well as other board representation, did effectively lead our district in a direction I'm really proud of. I believe this is our fifth consecutive year of holding the line on the levy, and this should actually, for the first time in five years, because our property values started to increase a little bit, is the first time that we are actually going to see an actual reduction in the actual tax rate. So the board has been deeply committed to this process. I'm sure Mr. Rollins will share more in his committee report, and welcome him to jump in if there are any additional comments he wants to make now. But I would like first to have Mr. McConaughey give a quick overview of what the board has accomplished, and I think it's something we can be really proud of.
Thank you. As Dr. Jarrett mentioned, this was discussed in detail, actually, at two of our most recent Finance Committee meetings. And as you might guess, we focused on the EAV, the assessed valuation of the property within the district, the impact on the rate, as Dr. Jarrett mentioned, and also on the extension, what it would do for the actual extension of dollars. And if you recall, the, anytime we have an increase in the EAV, I'm not sure why that projector's not up there, but...
It's on over here.
Yeah, I see it here, but I don't see it on the big one. The message in the numbers remain the same, whichever screen it's on. And we turned the corner, so to speak, on the assessed valuation of property. This is the first year in many, many years that we turned back from below a $2 billion property valuation to above that. And it's small, but we've made the turn in the positive direction. It was $1.96 billion last year, and it is just over $2 billion, about $2.1 billion this year. Now, in the committee, we looked at three scenarios, and the aggregate is just State of Illinois ease for all the levy except bond and interest, because that's the capped levy that's capped by the tax cap. So when I'm speaking up here, if you see the words capped or aggregate, it is everything except debt service. When I speak of total up on the screen, I'm adding debt service in so we can see what it would really look like on a tax bill. These are all estimates, but they're pretty good estimates, because they come directly from the county clerk's most recent information on property values and rates. We looked at three different scenarios to put things in perspective for our recommendation decision-making. The first of the scenarios is a fully extended rate. In other words, the county comes out and says, if you take the CPI inflation rate, if you take and reflect the increase in new property values, and and reflect the three large TIF recoveries that we had, all those will affect your rate. This is an unusual year for TIFs, and I know Mr. Rollins has mentioned this earlier, but three big TIFs came off this year, the East Side TIF, the West Side TIF, and right out here, the Seventh Avenue TIF. That means that the county clerk can give full uncapped credit for that, and it would basically raise the highest allowable tax rate that we could accept. That would make the capped rate, if you look up their fully extended rate, 7.26, when we add in the debt service for the total school tax rate, 7.93. Now, that would be very, very close to what the rate was last year. It was 7.935. The reason it changed a little bit, frankly, is because when the property value went up over that $2 billion mark, that allows the rate to actually drop one-half of a cent there. We also looked at what the rate would look like if we did, as we have done in the last four years, not count in the inflation factor, the CPI. And that actually drops that rate down about nine and a half cents. That's a lot. And that translates into a million dollars of what would be collected, another million dollars of what would be collected for the schools. So in that scenario, the second scenario, we would look at a capped rate dropping down from that 7.265 to 7.17. The total rate would drop down from 7.93, that's what we see on the tax bill, to 7.84. That's a very meaningful difference in a tax bill. We can go further than that, and the third scenario that we looked at in committee was not taking the money that would be generated from the TIF, not taking new construction, and not taking CPI. This would drop the capped rate down to $7.12 per hundred, or 7.79. There, we're realizing an estimated 14.5 cent drop in the total school tax rate for property owners in our district. This is what the resultant rate would be if we go, or resultant extension would be if we go to that furthest point, which is what the consensus was of the finance committee. We would, and this is in your packet under the certificate, I just pulled the numbers out of the certificate and removed some of the legal terminology, so it was easier to summarize. Same number, just under $80 million for education, just under $16 million for Ed Fund, and so on. What we would end up with, after everything was washed out, was 142, 428, it should be a comma, 965. That is virtually identical to what our extension was last year, almost to the dollar. So if we choose to go this route, we would be basically freezing our extension at last year's rate, as we did the year before. We would be giving the taxpayers a 14.5 cent break on their taxes, and we would have taken a similar stance as this is for five years in a row. Now, we did discuss that we can't do this forever, we can't freeze our revenues and have any increases in expenditures over the long term and still balance the books, so to speak. We've been fortunate lately that we've pulled in a little more state aid to counter this. We do not expect to get those high jumps forever from the state. We have to wait to see what happens next year and thereon. But this is the, these are the exact numbers we put in the first reading of the tax resolution in the request, certificate of levy request, and this is what, unless you would like to see a different scenario or a different approach, what we'll present to you for a second and final reading at the next board meeting.
Comments or questions? Mr. Rollins?
I guess I'm not clear. I thought we had just approved the resolution for the 2016 tax levies. It was under the consent agenda. So when you say, if you choose, we just did. Fifteen minutes ago.
Just going to say.
The intent was for this to be a first reading. If there's no change, I don't see any procedural difference in that, but we always like to give the board two readings for an opportunity for discussion.
I just wanted there to be some discussion about it, just because I think it's, again, I wanted to highlight the board's commitment to the community with this work, and I wanted to make sure that we had a chance to talk about it. While I was thrilled that there was such confidence in the work of the committee, that there was no need for discussion. I still thought we should probably talk about it later. So thank you, Mr. McConaughey.
Mr. Connor?
Are we going to get a copy of these slides, or was it, I didn't see?
It's in your.
Is it in, on the?
The copy of the slide itself is not, but all the same numbers are in the two attachments. I'd be glad to put these on board docs along with everything else.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you.
So, Mr. Rollins, are you asking the question about whether or not we have a?
No, I was just going to comment. I mean, I was trying to decide whether to comment now or during my committee report, but since we're talking about it now, the things that we talked about at the committee, I'll just comment on now, which is, the rate, as we all know, because we hear it from our constituents, is very, very high. When I got on the board five years ago, I think we were under $6, and now we almost hit $8 per $100 of assessed valuation in this past cycle. And if you live in Rockford, which most people in RPS 205 do live in Rockford, the total tax bill, the total tax rate is something like $15 per $100 of assessed valuation. It's one of the highest rates in the country. And so, you know, ultimately, there's a real risk here, if we haven't already, of killing the golden goose, which is, the golden goose in our case is residential taxpayers. Residential taxpayers account for 72% of our tax revenue, and like 94% of our tax parcels. So if we continue with these high rates, you know, there are a lot of places to live other than Rockford, and there are a lot of places just outside of Rockford to live that do not have rates that high. So the discussion is, you know, this may, we may be giving up revenue in the short term, but we felt that it was in the long-term best interest of the school district and the economic health of the community to take action that will hopefully start reducing the tax rate. But in saying that, I also want to point out, the Rockford School District represents only 52% of a tax bill. So the total tax rate, the total tax burden of people living in Rockford, is driven 48% by other taxing bodies. And so I'm pleased that we're taking this lead. I think it's the right thing to do. But whether that has an effect overall is going to be, in some ways, largely dependent on whether other taxing bodies follow suit. So I hope that we're, I hope we are taking the lead. One of our committee members for the finance committee is Mr. Biondo, who is on the finance committee for the Winnebago County. He indicated the county had already made the same decision. I certainly hope that other taxing bodies in Rockford will consider these same issues and follow suit.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, thank you. We will then move on to committee reports. Ms. McCulloch, the education committee report.
Education committee has not met since our last board meeting. We do have a meeting next week, Tuesday, October 18th, in this room at 5:30. There's three items on the agenda. One is an update on our SMART training and use of the SMART systems in the schools, a report on the whole bilingual program, and then the third item will be a discussion of the early literacy pilot program, which was listed as 18A on your agenda, but had not been to committee, so we'll have that conversation there. That's my report.
Okay. Mr. Rollins, finance committee.
It was actually a very short meeting. We met here in this room last Monday at 5:30 PM. I think the meeting was a total of 24 minutes long. We talked, but who's counting? That may, I think that may have been a record for a committee meeting for the Rockford School District. We talked about the levy. More specifically, Mr. McConaughey took us through, when we levy, we talk about the total levy, but we actually levy by funds. We have a whole bunch of different funds, and some of those funds are subject to statutory, individual statutory tax caps, and other rate caps, I should say, and others are not. And we went through some of the mechanics of how that works, and how at the end of the day, you still end up at the, sort of, the same number. So other than, that was really the only topic that we covered. There were a couple of topics that got deferred, because the people weren't available to speak to us that night. Those will be covered at the next meeting, which will be on Monday, November 7th, here in this room at 5:30 PM.
Thank you. Mr. Connor, the operations committee report.
The operations committee did not meet. We gave our update last time on a special meeting on the new school designs. Our next meeting will be on Tuesday, November 1st, at 6:30 in this room.
We are now on to action items for tonight. Our first action item is the approval of Board Policy 4.80, the operational services, accounting, and audits. This was presented by Mary Ann Bassonan. Is there a motion and a second to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor. Seconded by Ms. McCulloch. Any questions or discussion? None, I'll have the coordinator call the roll on the approval of the Board Policy 4.80.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
We are now on to our second action item, which is real estate purchases. Does the board wish to vote on these separately or grouped?
Grouped.
Grouped. Two groups. Purchased, that's right. Purchased, everybody okay with that? Okay. So I'll take a motion first for the real estate purchases.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Segal. Any questions or discussion? Now I'll have the coordinator call the roll on the approval of the real estate purchases.
Ms. Jackson? Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses and one no.
Our next item, then, is the resolution for authorization of eminent domain at 514 Gregory Street. Is there a motion to approve this? Is there a second one? Oh, you do group those, yeah. And the other one at 606 Gregory Street. There we go.
So moved.
Okay. Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Segal. Any questions or discussion? Mr. Rollins?
Sorry.
Okay.
No, no.
Mr. Connor?
I will say, for the 100th time, apologies to everybody, this is our last resort. We don't like doing it, but we have done negotiations in good faith and tried to get a hold of these folks, so again, this is a last resort for us.
Okay. The coordinator then called the roll on the approval for the resolution to authorize eminent domain for 514 Gregory Street and 606 Gregory Street.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
The motion passes with six yeses, one no.
Okay, we are now on to new business. The literacy item was pulled, and that will go to education committee, as Ms. McCulloch already talked about. Mr. Dotson, you're going to talk to us about graduation ceremonies at Rock Valley College contract.
Yes, sir. Good evening. So I am bringing this recommendation on behalf of our high school principals, who have been discussing this for at least a couple of years now, the idea of moving graduation ceremonies from BMO to Rock Valley College. Some of the things that played into their deliberation and discussion in terms of why they favored moving it was the idea that they liked the optics of having graduation on a college campus. They liked the idea of a more intimate setting. They think the acoustics are better at Rock Valley College. Parking has been a problem in the past with regards to families coming downtown, not necessarily being able to find free parking. The one issue that certainly, that they considered is the challenge of limiting the number of family members that can be invited. Right now, it stands that each student will be able to invite six to eight guests, with the options to invite more, and the schools will control that aspect of the process. They think that their families and their students will make the adjustment, and they think they can accommodate those who want more tickets, and they're excited about it. And lastly, I'll just say, they also reserve the option of going back to the BMO if, for some reason, that this doesn't go well.
Can you talk a little bit about the cost difference?
Oh, yes. So, not a lot, but it saves us about, approximately about $3,000 savings on the cost, as opposed to BMO.
Okay. Mr. Connor?
I just lost it. I'll be right back.
Okay. Ms. Jackson?
I'm going to go on.
All right. Ms. Jackson?
So, one of the concerns that I have is what you mentioned, is limiting the number of students. We just attended for my daughter, and she could invite four people at that graduation at Rock Valley. Not every student showed up, and it was still a very, very packed house. Even with parking, it's, I think it's better, it's still just a little more challenging. So just a concern that I have is limiting the number of people. I know even when we go to BMO Harris, it's, it seems like it's too big. Is there anything that's in the middle, do you think, or?
I think, I think the middle was six to eight.
Is Rock Valley it?
Six to eight.
Well, I mean, as far as size.
Oh, the venue?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's not, I mean, we've, I believe, they, as I mentioned, they've been discussing this for at least a couple of years now, and I think this year, they finally decided to go forward with it. But unfortunately, in our, in our area, there's only a couple of options. And yeah, it's Rock Valley and the BMO. And again, because of the size, we have to limit and monitor the number of tickets that are given out.
So I know that you said that perhaps some students might be able to get more tickets. So how have they thought that out? Because if you get, if I get six, and then you can get eight, then I'm going to want eight, and then you get 10, so how, how have they sort of talked through that?
You know, I, my, I guess, my, my thinking is that, again, not everyone will need the six to eight. I think some will need less, and I think they'll get a bundle of tickets, and they're pretty confident that they kind of know who their students are, who those seniors are, and they feel, they feel pretty good that they'll come up with a system of accommodating those who really want more. And I think the other thing is, again, they want to, because they really like the decision, but it's about, I guess, adjusting to kind of a new norm, if you will, and it's just a, it's a little bit of a change for our families, and they feel confident that they can make that adjustment.
So this is just for the one year, because you said if it doesn't work out, or if it doesn't, they can go back to BMO?
Absolutely, but they want to give it a shot.
It only saves us $3,000?
Yeah, it's just, not, not a lot, but, but there is a savings there, but.
Mr. Connor?
I did remember. I know age is a terrible thing, right?
Maybe not.
Well, maybe not. Who knows? Is there any impact in terms of classes at Rock Valley? Are there any restrictions that we've got in terms of, you know, parking around that?
No, sir.
No? Okay.
They're probably out of session.
Well, they have summer sessions. I didn't know if there was any, but they'll accommodate it, is what I'm hearing. Okay.
Ms. McCulloch?
And this is at the PE Center? Does that mean the gym?
Yes.
Okay. And we didn't move Roosevelt.
No, Roosevelt will still be at the Coronado.
And would that have saved us money, had we put them?
That's a good question.
That's not a cheap thing.
That is, that is a good question. I don't, I think that because of the size of that class, they thought that venue still works for them, but I certainly can, we can certainly look at that as an option for Roosevelt. works for them, but I certainly can, we can certainly look at that as an option for Roosevelt. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
What's the seating capacity at Rock Valley?
So anywhere between 2,500 and 2,700.
Okay. Could always, always risk doing it outside at one of the football stadiums. Mr. Escobedo, did you have a question?
Yeah, what's seating capacity for our high school gymnast teams?
Oh, wouldn't that be great? Mr. Schmidt?
1,300.
Okay, there you go. 1,300. That, so to Ms., to Ms. Jackson's point, that, so that would be ideal. I mean, they, I think they would love to have it at their high school if they could accommodate that, but apparently, that's not an option. Field houses, we would love to have it at the field houses as well. Todd keeps telling us, yeah. Yeah, it'd be different.
Plenty of room, but there's no air conditioning.
You can rent bleachers, but it would take up more space, probably, yeah. Any more questions or discussion? This will be presented on our October 25th meeting for a vote. Are there any other business items for tonight?
So moved.
If not, I'll take a motion and a second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. We are adjourned at 7:49.
That's impressive.
You beat 'em.
That's really disappointing. Now Lester can't hold that. That's all it takes, a little comfort.